We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
For the Reno City Council, Brekis.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Delgado. Absent.
George.
Jordan.
Here.
Shivi.
Here.
Kishel. Absent.
Public comment?
I have none right now.
Okay. Then we'll move right into approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second for approval. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Um, we probably should. No? Since we're a workshop?
If you'd like, I can call roll call. Let's do it for the record. Okay. For the Access Advisory Committee, I have David Tom. Absent. Ikavelli. Absent. Price Toby.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Brew. Absent. Beck Weaver. Absent. McCabe.
Present.
Okay. And for the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Kizera.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Clontz.
Here.
Rossi.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Cooper Smith.
Here.
Tar Button. Grady? Yeah, okay.
(laughing).
Thank you. Thank you. Remember there, this is... There's no action to be taken tonight. This is for open discussion and sharing of information. So, kind of keep that in mind as we proceed through, that it is for sharing of information and no action will be taken this evening. And so, we'll begin with our presentations, starting with the Senior Citizen Programming Services. Julie, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Assistant City Manager, and members of the Citizen Committees, and also our audience. For the record, my name is Julie Conway, Director of the Parks Recreation Community Services Department, and our department is honored to be able to work with these two committees in serving the public, so...
Sorry.
Yes?
Julie, we don't have an official vote on the agenda. I said aye, but maybe not everyone else. We have a motion and a second for approval on the agenda. Everyone in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please continue.
Good evening, honorable... No.[181.23][181.23](laughing). Skip ahead here. Tonight's joint meeting is a result of council's request that began as an L item and at one of your recent city council meetings. And the request was to bring to city council these two committees together with you to talk about what is going on with existing and future services. And we have also brought together, or brought to you, as you see from the agenda, a report from the Regional Transportation Commission, and we have Washoe County here tonight, as well as someone from the governor's office. And we're very pleased to be able to bring these resources to bear, to provide you the information that you may need and want in serving our citizens. So, tonight we have Donna Clontz, who will be... Who is Chair of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and she'll be representing the committee. We have Angela McCabe, who is a member of the Reno Access Advisory Committee, and she'll be speaking for them. We have our RTC representatives, Regional Transportation Commission, and David Jickling. He is a Director of Public Transportation, and he will be giving a presentation. Also, under Item D4, the Parks Recreation Community Services Staff, Darrell Feimster, Manager of Youth and Senior Division Services, and April Wolf, who is the Therapeutic Recreation Specialist, and she is responsible for supporting the Inclusion and Adaptive Program, and they will be speaking to Item D4, as will Grady Tar Button, who is the Director for Senior Services for Washoe County. And we understand that Sheri Manning will also be here, and she is the Executive Director of the Nevada Governor's Council on Developmental Disabilities. We're very pleased to have all these resources here for you tonight. And also, I'd like to recognize, to your right and my left, our sign interpreter, April Ortiz-Kloninger, who is signing for those who may be hearing impaired. So, at this time, I would like to introduce Donna Clontz, who is the Chair of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and we'll get right into the presentations. And there are some PowerPoints when the time is correct... Right. All right. Donna?
Julie.
Julie, thank you. I would just add to that, that we really do need to give credit specifically to former councilman Pierre Hashef. At the end of his tenure here at council, he used to be the liaison to both of these committees and recognized that the new council and as older folks really could benefit from having an introduction and a workshop. There would be some great value to that. So, that is indeed why we teamed up, Hillary and I, and came forward with the request. So, thank you, and specific credit to Mr. Hashef.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, staff, and audience, and also both committees and the members that have come tonight. I'm Donna Clontz. I'm the Chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and we are a group of nine members that are appointed by the city council to work on senior issues throughout the year. We have two ex-official members. One is a county person, that's Grady Tar Button, who is the Director for Senior Services at the county, and also a Sparks... City of Sparks representative. And it's Tanya Ramachetti, who works for the Recreation Department in Sparks. And our liaison to the city council is Hillary Shivi, who's taken Pierre's place. And Pierre served many years on our committee as the liaison to the city council, as well as to the access committee. So, we appreciate a chance to talk to all of you tonight, a little bit about what the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee does, and a little bit about senior programs. You'll see some PowerPoint presentations later. I'm going to only spend about five or six minutes with you, talking a bit about the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. The group was created by city ordinance in 1994, and we have a mission, a purpose that's listed in the statute. Our mission is to advise the Reno City Council and inform the community about the interests and needs of our senior citizens. We will promote and support enriching events, services, and programs to support senior citizens' interests and needs, and we will serve as an advocate on behalf of our community's senior citizens, so that they can maintain a superior quality of life and independence. So, that is basically the wording in the statute that created this group about 15 years or so ago. The programs that the City of Reno creates and puts forward for seniors are contained in the Senior Connect publication, which is available all over the city, everywhere there's a city building, also in libraries and places like that, and it's also available online. And this document gives those who are interested in senior programs a listing of what's available. Many of the programs are free, some have small fees, and it tells folks where to go and how to get access to those senior programs. Our job as the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee is to know about the programs, have input into the programs that are offered to our seniors, come up with ideas that come through the senior community to suggest ideas to add programs. We also do some evaluation of programs when we're asked to, to tell the city staff what seniors are saying about these programs. Are they effective? Are there things that seniors would like to see? Because we have open meetings every month. We meet every second Tuesday, usually at the Neal Road Recreation Center, and our agendas are posted, so that community members can attend those meetings and comment on the things that we're working on, or bring before us things that are going on in the senior community that they'd like us to help with. We also work on ideas of our own that come before us. This past year, we created a strategic plan that is in final edit right now. When it's completed, we will get copies of it to you. But what our strategic plan has done is that we took a look at our mission and the goals that we have for seniors in the community, and identified six priorities that we began working on as we were working on the strategic plan last fall. And the identified six priorities all have action plans that go along with them. The first priority we identified is community information. We want to do everything we can to help increase community awareness of Reno senior programs and resources. That happens already through Senior Connect and through the website, but there are also a lot of opportunities for better media outreach to the community that we and the Senior Advisory Board would like to help with. We know that the city itself is working on a lot of increased community communication and more community involvement, and we are already part of that and want to continue with you, working on enhancing that community involvement. The nine of us that meet put volunteer hours into coming to those meetings. We also go to the county's senior advisory board. There's a group also at the county that works on senior programs. And so, we meet with them quarterly to talk about issues that we're both working on. We have met with them for all the years that I've been part of the Senior Advisory Board to work on such things as the budgets that are coming before the cities or the counties that involve senior programming. We've been very active in going to workshops, attending council meetings and commission meetings to speak in public comment and support of senior programs. When senior programs are potentially at risk, we also come out and work on networking to bring a lot more attention to that from the senior community, so that you and other elected officials can hear directly from the constituency of seniors here in the community. The second priority we identified is program development. Because we know that there's a huge growth of seniors in the Reno, in the Washoe County area, and Grady will be talking to you a little bit later, Grady Tar Button, about some of the demographics there. We know that in 2012, the census showed that there were over 76,000 seniors in Washoe County who were over 60 years old in 2010, growing to 100,000 by 2020. It's about a 25 to 30 percent growth rate in that 10-year span. We know that seniors continue to move to the Reno area in greater numbers than many other demographic groups, and they plan to stay here. They plan to become a permanent part of our community. The other large group is the college-age group, and many of those are UNR students who are here temporarily, hopefully staying, but this other very large group are the senior population. So, as part of our senior advisory board activity, we've taken a look at the programs that the city is offering to seniors and begun to look at and begin evaluating the numbers of seniors that are participating in them, the costs, and to see if there are things that we can suggest that make our programs more efficient and reach more seniors. And we'll be making recommendations to city staff in the next few months. Funding and evaluating and analysis is our third priority. We know that in the past few years, that funding for all governmental resources has been very, very stressed. And throughout that process, we, as the senior advocates in the senior advisory board, have been actively talking with the elected officials as they're making decisions about funding. So, we get copies of the county budget, the city budgets. We become familiar with what is going on. We come and advocate to keep senior programs robust and enriched where possible. The City of Reno has funded the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee at various levels for the years that it's been in existence. Sometimes it's around $10,000. Sometimes it's more than that. This year, we received about $20,000 that we have used to support senior programs that otherwise might not have been able to occur, such as the Summer... The Senior Summer Games, the Senior Winter Games, Senior Fest, which is a huge health fair that happens in September, where 5,000 to 10,000 seniors come through, and the city has its programs showcased there, and we help support that activity. Also, the Older Americans Month, which is coming up in May, and you'll have a proclamation about that, and the booklet just came out. So, this is a booklet that seniors around the community will be able to choose to attend all kinds of senior activities. Some of them are free, some of them have small costs, but it's anything from lectures to attending an ACES game as a large group of seniors, and other events that, as it says here, help unleash the power of age. And this is a program that is a national seniors event that Reno has done for the past few years. And this is a joint effort by the City of Reno Senior Advisory Committee and the Washoe County Committee, and volunteers in the community that go to committee meetings that help put the programs together. Our fourth priority in our plan is building partnerships and sponsorships for senior services. We know that we have quite a few partners already in the community. We meet and go to their meetings, and we want to determine what other and newer groups are in the community that might want to work with us to continue to support senior programs. Also, to grow our volunteer base, and also come up with financial assistance, because we do get sponsorships from community groups such as Renown and Envy Energy and other of the larger companies here in the community that come forward to help with community events. Our fifth priority is transportation, to increase transportation services for Reno seniors. And some of our members have been active in the meetings that RTC has been holding as they've been working on the 2035 master plan, and I know you'll be hearing more about that today as well. To serve seniors that, as they age, many times don't drive anymore, and they need to have reliable, efficient, and affordable transportation, so that they can get to events that they need to go to, to doctor's appointments for shopping and those kinds of things as well. So, our group is actively working on that as a priority area. And the last one is senior services needs assessment. We have had data that was gathered in 2002, updated some with some work in 2006, and Washoe County, through Grady Tar Button and at the Washoe County Senior Services Division, is funded to do a community-wide needs assessment to find out what seniors are doing, what seniors need, and the data will be used for future planning and program development and goal-setting. We... The nine of us at the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee have been working hard on the community information and getting out in the community ourselves. We've been promoting and supporting enriching events, services, and programs for seniors. We volunteer our time to help plan these events and come out to help staff them, so that seniors can participate in Older Americans Month and senior games and other things. We also allocate funds, as I said before, from the funds that the city council delegates to us, and we thank you for that and hope that some portion of that can continue in the future. As I said, those community events would not happen without that bit of support that the city can give to those events. And we participate ourselves in the programs that the City of Reno offers to seniors in the community. We advocate for seniors in many ways by attending the monthly Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meetings. We go to the monthly Washoe County Senior Advisory Board meetings, even when we're not meeting together with them. We visit with city council members and county commission members to talk about senior issues and to exchange ideas about things that we can all do better together for our seniors. We network with other senior services groups, such as the Sanford Center on Aging, RSVP, Oshir Lifelong Learning Institute, ALI for short, the Senior Coalition Meetings, and other provider groups. And we visit from time to time with the senior living communities in the area, and we'll be doing more of that as our strategic plan comes forward and as we build our own continuing networks with seniors. So, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this a bit. Any questions? I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Are there any questions?
Can you confirm with me again how much the city gave in the last year to this group?
My understanding, it was $22,200. Some of it was swept back into county reserves. We distributed about half of that. At our upcoming meeting, we're hoping to put $5,000 toward the summer senior games, and that'll leave a balance of a few thousand left. We haven't spent... We've spent about half of it, I think, at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do have a public comment. Mac Rossi? Thank you, Donna.
My name is Mac Rossi. I'm a member of the Neighborhood Advisory Board, Ward Five. I'm a member of the Senior Advisory Board, and I'm also was on the RTC planning for the 20-year planning. It wasn't meant to be that way. I retired, stayed home, and my wife... It became life or death. My wife said, "Get involved in something, or I'll kill you."[1238.88][1238.88](laughing). I'm going to keep it really simple. There'll be presentations by all the committees here, so it would only be repetitious for me to follow through with something else. But looking here, it looks like you're not wanting to wear out this head table here, so you moved from one side and then back to the other. Is that what it is? Why it's empty over this side? So... But I'd like to say that because there's some new blood here, the last... A lot of the last members of the city council, before they retired, stirred up some dust and then tiptoed away. I think it shouldn't be overlooked that the fire department needs to be reviewed again, and I believe that there's at least a million dollars that can be saved just by taking another look at it again. I think a lot of it's repetitious and needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Donna? Okay. The next presenter, Julie, is... So, we're moving right on to B. Okay. I thought you were going to have Grady and others talk on seniors.
That is certainly up to the council's pleasure. What we have is that Grady will be at the... Under D4 and be wrapping all of his presentation under D4.
Okay. Thank you. Okey-dokey.
Good evening. My name is Angela McCabe, and I'm a member of the Reno Access Advisory Committee. This committee, nicknamed the RAC, was created in 1989 to review city codes and policies. The committee's goal is to make our city more accessible to people with disabilities. The committee has focused its efforts on improving access... Excuse me. To people with disabilities. The community has focused its efforts on improving access to public facilities and businesses, as well as increasing public awareness of the physical accessibility, educational, and employment needs of individuals with disabilities. The RAC consists of nine members from the Reno community. These members include individuals with disabilities, disability service providers, and people that are interested in disability-related issues. The RAC contains a multifaceted approach to serve the needs of Reno's disabled community. Through Reno City Council's financial and staff support of this committee, the RAC has been able to support many Reno community projects. The RAC provides a sounding board for the public to bring disabled access concerns for investigation, assist staff in prioritizing pedestrian ramp projects, provides input into the community businesses and services related to persons with disabilities, such as RTC, the Emergency Planning Commission, and ACES Ballpark. It provides input to staff on ADA and CIP projects for community access, such as the Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center, the Neal Road Community Center, the Reno Sports Complex, Reno's first universal access playground. It provides funds to community nonprofits to support disabled organizations and events in the Reno community, such as the Down Syndrome's Buddy Walk, the Tour de Nae, Disability Awareness Month speakers, the Notables. It provides input to Parks Recreation and Community Services staff. We have hosted community-wide workshops to gain input on disability service gaps and future needs. In 2003, the RAC conducted its first disability summit to gather input about current disability issues such as transportation, accessibility, and recreation in the community, and various related disability-related agencies. A second summit was in 2007 and was focused on identifying recreational gaps in the Reno community that creates barriers for persons with disabilities. The following priorities were identified and used to develop the Parks and Recreation Community Services current inclusion plan. These priorities include increasing designated funding in appropriate Parks and Rec budgets to improve programs, facilities, and equipment, improve communication and target outreach efforts to ensure persons with disabilities are aware of these program options, and improve physical access to all indoor and outdoor recreational facilities. These goals ensured adaptive recreation and inclusion services achieved high levels of community visibility and participation. The RAC views itself as an agent of change in the community to promote full and equal participation of all citizens in our community and civic life through policy guidance, education, public awareness, and advocacy. The board collaborates with Reno citizens, neighborhood advisory boards, commissions, and community-based organizations. The Reno City Council is an integral part to the work that the RAC has done to date. We greatly appreciate the support of the Reno City Council and look forward to our continued partnership as we work together to influence positive change for Reno's disabled community. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Are there any questions?
Jenny Brekis, Word One. Does the school district have an advisory committee on disabilities, a standing committee of some sort?
I am not aware of any either.
So, for the record, April Wolf, therapeutic recreation specialist. Not that I'm aware of. They have various staff groups, so they have an adaptive PE for adaptive physical education, and their CLS classes, so community service living classes, but not a committee that I'm aware of. I know that they have inclusion efforts that they were doing throughout the school district, so they may have a committee available for that.
Not a PTA group, specific to children's with disabilities or...
Not that I'm aware of. There's other groups that exist in the community. So, there's the Nevada PEP, which is Parents Encouraging Parents. So, they're a parent group that gets together. So, there's a number of those different groups in town. Nevada Family Ties. There's organizations like the CP Parent Network, so parents of individuals with cerebral palsy. So, there's various groups that exist in the community.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Angela. Sheri, do you have comments for us as well? Or are you here just for questions?
I think I'm on the agenda.
Okay.
But I do have my... And I can grab some of the questions, whereas I have questions. I have...
So, probably B4. Okay. We do have a request for public comment. James Kizera, please.
My name's James Kizera. I'm a Reno resident, and I'm also on the board of the Senior Advisory, Reno City Advisory Board, and on the RTC 2035 Plan. What I have today is... My sister lives down in Southern California right now. She's moving up here, but she had a group of seniors down there, and they had a problem with special events. And she called me and asked me for my advice, and the problem is that the special events, the ground is uneven, they only have Santa cans or stuff like that that makes it very hard for disabled or senior citizens to use. And I suggested that they get a rating thing. So, if the parks and everything have good restrooms and good ground, the rating could be good, but if it has problems, they should state the problems. If it's uneven ground for like wheelchairs or scooters, or people with walkers that have a balance problem anyway, it should be stated. And I want to give this idea to the Access Advisory Committee to follow up, but my sister and them thought it was a good idea. I was at a joint meeting with this county senior citizens. They thought that was a good idea. The chair there said that she was on a cruise ship in Italy, and all of their outings on buses and stuff all had ratings, if there was a lot of walking or climbing or stuff like that. So, this isn't a new idea, but it is new to special events, and it should be advertised, put on all of their advertising. If it's on the radio, it would have to be announced, so the senior citizens and the people with disabilities could make their own... So the senior citizens and the people with disabilities could make their own mind up whether they want to go through all this problem, because it's a real problem down there, and I don't know how bad it is here, but I think it should be a national thing going on to get all these special events rated so the people and the public could see what they're going to face if they want to take that, go to that special event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kizara. The Access Advisory Committee meets on Tuesday evenings. In fact, tomorrow evening is its scheduled meeting for April. If that's convenient for you, or you can come to the May meeting. It begins at 5:30, and it meets at the Evelyn Mount Center on Valley Road and...
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Uh-huh. But again, the members are here and certainly have taken note of it. But if you'd like to have discussion or have public comment and request an agenda item, you certainly are welcome to do that. Any other questions?
Thank you for that comment. That's very good input. Recently, having gone on a cruise, I know exactly what you're talking about. And it's also kind of like the hike guidelines, where it says it's easy, moderate, or difficult or something. I think that's a great idea. We both sit on the Special Events Committee, Councilwoman Zadra and I, so I think we can bring some of these suggestions to all of those with special events as well to make sure that accessibility is, you know, on their radar.
Thank you. All right. Then let's move to Item B3, and that is a presentation from the RTC regarding senior and disabled public transit. Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. For the record, Lee Gibson, I'm the Executive Director of the Regional Transportation Commission. I have with me tonight David Jickling. David's going to walk you through a PowerPoint presentation we have on specifically, on specific issues related to senior and disabled transportation. But before he does that, I'd just like to bring, for your information, two points. Last Friday, at our regular board meeting, we approved a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2014. I'm pleased to report to you tonight that that tentative budget does not include any transit service cuts. We're programming approximately $25 million for transit operations next year, so we will continue moving forward with the current service levels for ride and access, our fixed route and our paratransit service. We also have in that budget $19 million of capital. Approximately 80% of that is being funded from the federal government. Each and every one of the capital projects that we've outlined in there is designed to save us operating money, including the four electric buses that we'll be taking delivery on in next fiscal year. We're hoping that could save us approximately $200,000 a year in operating costs, which is the equivalent of half a route. And we'll also be doing some modifications at our maintenance facility. Those modifications are designed to allow us to perhaps incrementally buy a few more buses. But fundamentally, one of our biggest constraints we're going to see in our operation is the current Villanova facility. It's just simply not big enough to expand. The other action the board took on Friday was to approve our new regional transportation plan. I want to thank Matt and James for their contribution. They worked on our community working group throughout the entire time. Indeed, I'd like to acknowledge Councilwoman's Breckus' participation. She was a member of our Citizens Advisory Committee during that period. So we want to, we really appreciate the citizens' involvement. This is a people-oriented plan. Want to point out in the plan, there is $21 million of unfunded transit needs we've identified in this community. That's $21 million a year that we could use to operate new services, including rapid expansions to our fixed route service, a new dial-a-ride service that could help seniors. But these are services we just simply don't have the funds for. And again, to go back to my earlier point, we're going to need a new facility in order to operate those new services from if and whenever we do find the money. I want to, before I let David come up, I do want to close. We are taking a more targeted approach to our relationship with Washington. The Congress will be rewriting portions of the MAP-21 bill. That bill needs to address, and we've communicated this to our delegation, needs to address the underfunding of the Highway Trust Fund. The Highway Trust Fund, by the way, approximately three cents of the, every 18.4 cents you fund every time you fill up a gallon of gas goes to the Mass Transit Account. So we really need to work diligently to bring those monies back to Washoe County, to the Reno-Sparks metropolitan area. They can help fund many of the projects that we've laid out and help address some of the issues that David's going to cover. So with that, David, I'd like you to come up and go through your presentation. And then we'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council, and the two advisory committees who are here this evening. It's my pleasure to talk to you a little bit about senior and disabled transportation issues that certainly many, if not everyone, in the room is familiar with to a certain degree. But we at RTC are spending quite a bit of time looking at these issues because they're appearing in the future as quite daunting challenges to us to provide the transportation services that we project will be necessary in the future in the community. I thought I'd start with just a little bit on who uses public transportation. I'm not sure how many people in this room use public transportation, but about a third of our population doesn't drive. And if you don't drive a motor vehicle, then your choices are walking, or a bicycle, or catching a ride with someone else, or transit. So transit for many people is their only mobility choice. And of course, who are we talking about? These are largely, of course, children under 16. They don't have a driver's license, so they certainly don't drive. And then elderly, who perhaps have given up driving or shouldn't be driving, use transit. And then, of course, people with disabilities who maybe have no other choice and never were able to drive. So public transportation is vitally important to a large segment of our population. And frankly, we're seeing with gas prices and attitudes amongst young people that there's actually a growing number of people who are choosing to ride public transportation. Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to mention that little graph. I've combined a bunch of PowerPoint slides to try and keep this concise for you. The little pie graph up the top gives you a sense as to a survey. These are what people report themselves as onboard our bus. Disabled calling themselves someone with a disability is about a quarter of our ridership. Seniors, roughly 9% to 10%. Youth, 10%. And the balance are adults. Now, I do want to be clear there that that disabled number does include adults, does include youths, does include seniors. So it's how people self-report. But certainly roughly about a third of the ridership on our fixed route system are seniors and people with disabilities. So the other thing that's important for our fixed route system is getting people to work. Roughly half of every trip taken on the ride system is somebody going to or from work. That number was as high as 60% prior to the recession. So what we really want to stress to people who are unfamiliar with our services is that these are vital to the economy of our community in terms of these people's welfare and their ability to get to and from work. Eight million trips roughly provided annually on the ride system, nearly 3 million of which are people with disabilities or senior citizens. So this is a very important service, the fixed route service I'm talking about right now, our big buses, to the community and to seniors and disabled. We carry roughly 30 and 1/2 passengers an hour for every hour of service we operate. To give you a perspective on that, we operate 24 hours a day, and that's an average right there for that service. During the middle of the day, we've got as many as 53, 54 buses out on the road. So we've got at any given time during the middle of the day as many as 2,000 people onboard our buses. So they're a pretty efficient system when we compare ourselves to peers. We're one of the best in that regard. We're 100% wheelchair and ADA accessible. So certainly, one of our keys is getting people who can use the transit system to the transit system. And as we certainly could talk about through the RTP that Lee mentioned, one of our big efforts is going to be focused on making sidewalks more accessible, people's abilities to access from their home and walk to the various bus systems and areas of our community. As you're going to hear, I think, in much more detail from Grady, and you've already heard from Donna talking a little bit about an overview of the growing senior population, we're seeing big changes there. This slide here shows you just in roughly the past 10 years where that change has occurred. And I've circled there Spanish Springs and Cold Springs, where you can see we've had a tremendous growth in the senior population. And in fact, when you look at all the population growth in the community, it's largely been in the suburban areas of the Washoe County. And these unfortunately are areas that providing services to are very challenging, and particularly transportation services. So what we're seeing is a big growth in areas where frankly, we don't provide much service. And the future trends, certainly with aging in place and other kinds of things, tend to suggest that that's where people will want to be. And our challenge is going to be, can we serve them and how do we serve them? Here, looking more focused in our metropolitan area, the centralized area of Reno and Sparks, that's certainly where we obviously have the highest densities of population. And this is looking at seniors, 65 and above. The darker yellow gives you the higher concentrations of where they are living today. And obviously, from a transit perspective, this is a much easier market to serve when we've got high concentrations. And certainly, the little dark dots show medical facilities. The light green dots, a little hard to see, I know, show senior housing. The more that those can be consolidated in the metropolitan area, the easier it will be for us to continue to provide those vital services to people who need them. And this really, as you look at this picture, is the core of where both fixed route and paratransit services are the most successful. And by that, I mean carry the most people for the fewest taxpayer dollars. RTC Access Service, I think hopefully everyone has seen the van in the bottom-left corner there of the screen that provides door-to-door paratransit service to people in our community. What many people don't understand is how that service is funded and what the need for that service is. As a federal recipient of USDOT transportation dollars, because we provide a fixed route, the big bus system, the ride system, we are obligated to provide what is known as a complementary paratransit system. And that's service that is designed for people whose disability prevents them from accessing our fixed route system. And so what you see here in this picture is a graphic of the greater metropolitan county area. And we have what we call the non-ADA zone, which is in blue or outside our ADA service area, and the ADA service area, which is kind of that mustard color. And the way that mustard color is defined through federal regulation as it's within 3/4 of a mile of any fixed route. So if you draw any of our bus routes out and then go out in either direction 3/4 of a mile, that's the area that we call the ADA service area. And we're required by law to provide service to people who are eligible, meaning they have a disability that precludes them from using our fixed route system. We must provide them with a trip if they request it. The blue area is our historic service area when we took over the system in 1991. And at that time, we were able to provide everybody in the county living within the blue and the mustard color area with this service. Today, as costs have risen, as demand has increased, we are more and more being constrained into being able to provide service largely within that mustard ADA service area. We do have two fares. The fare in the yellow area is $3. The fare in the outside area is $6. This shows the same area, just a little different.
David, just for the record, I mean, you talk about the fares in those areas. What is the cost to run that service in those areas?
I think I've got a slide that's going to get to that, Dwight. But yeah, let me get that in just a moment. Same, just slightly different way of looking at it. The paratransit service carried a little over 225,000 passengers is about how many trips we provide in a year. That's roughly 600 trips a day that we're providing to the community. We talk in productivity by passengers per something known as revenue vehicle hour. So for every hour that a bus is in service, carrying passengers, we call that a revenue vehicle hour. Paratransit and these types of service are very inefficient, roughly about 2.7 passengers per hour. The very best paratransit systems in the country peak out somewhere a little over 3. Most are somewhere in the 1.7, 1.8. So it is a very difficult service because of the nature of the passengers you're carrying, the types of trip that you're providing. And we expect demand for this service, of course, to grow as boomers are aging and will more likely need these services. Each of those dots, by the way, represents the approximate location of a registered user of the access system. We've got right now about 3,200 people who are registered and eligible to use the service in our area. Here's that cost, Dwight. So it's expensive service. Our cost per passenger on this is about $23, $24 per passenger. That's a taxpayer subsidized cost. That compares to our fixed route system, which is about $2.38 per passenger that we carry. So you can see that the paratransit service is about 10 times as expensive per passenger to provide. And therefore, we have considerable incentive to try and teach people to be able to use the fixed route system, to make sure that sidewalks and infrastructure is in place. Because many people, once they're on the fixed route bus, are able to use it. Their dilemma is they can't get to it. And that makes them eligible. And so as we're seeing, demand for the ADA service within that graphic there growing, we're reducing the amount of service because we simply can't provide the service outside of that sort of bubbled area now. The big circles are showing you levels of activity. And if you think back to that map I showed you with densities of seniors, again, you can see, and probably in your mind picture, various facilities that are located around some of those large circles. And that's where people are largely wanting to go. We cannot prioritize this service, so I can't give one passenger a preference because it's a medical trip and another passenger wants to go play bingo at a casino. This is a civil rights act that governs providing this service, so there's no deciding who gets a priority. Every trip is considered equally important. When you look at just the past five years, how our service has been broken up, if you will, between that ADA, non-ADA, you can see the blue line is the ADA service. So this is the service we must provide. If you call in and request a trip, we must provide that trip. The yellow is that non-ADA, which you can see is declining. The blue lines, you can see, are going up a little bit. And then the red is the hours of service we provide to the community. And I show that down there below. So you can see in 2013, we're estimating we're going to provide about 82,000 hours of paratransit service in the community. And if you look across that, you'll see we actually provided more in 2009. So we were facing, like a lot of programs, cuts that we had to manage. And so we made our eligibility process more strict in terms of ensuring that the only people who were getting access to this service were people who truly needed it. And we started to cut back on those non-ADA trips because we could no longer afford to provide those based on the demand for the ADA. And so the pattern there, if you look at that red line, is pretty much for the same amount of service that we've been providing, we're carrying more passengers. And what I'm projecting is that in 2014, maybe 2015, we will not be providing any non-ADA trips to the community. This is another visual on the sorts of things we're facing. Obviously, we're an aging population. We're living longer. We're working longer. That's a challenge as well for our retirement systems. By 2035, we're projecting a 36% population increase for the people who might be seniors in our community, excuse me, who might be eligible for our service that we provide. 70% growth in seniors, 76... Let me back up. I'm saying this all wrong. The population is going to grow 36% by 2035. 70% of that growth, in terms of what seniors are doing today, we're projecting a 76% growth in demand for our access services. So the lines there, if you look at it, the blue line on the bottom is the population growth we're projecting. The green line is the percent of increase of seniors. And the red line is what we're projecting will be access demand over the next 15 to 20 years. Challenges for us, like everyone else, is revenues are not keeping pace with expenses. As a result of the Great Recession, or whatever we've all decided to call it, we've projected that we've lost about $40 million in sales tax revenues. Sales tax is what funds our public transportation program. We're projecting a negative cash balance in 2017. So what we will be needing to do as an agency is looking within the public transportation program of cuts of roughly about $2 million that we'll have to implement in 2016. Rising fuel costs, that's affecting all of us, but that's a big part of our operational costs, is the fuel for our vehicles. As Lee mentioned, we've got aging facilities. Many of our maintenance facilities are 20 and 30 years old and can't handle the fuels of the future. So we've got challenges there. And as we talked with our board at a retreat in March, there are questions about what is the right amount of transit for the community. And depending on who you ask, you get different answers. But those are some of the answers we're going to, or questions we're going to be posing to the community as we go forward to grapple some of these challenges. I think there's many who might say we've got plenty of transit service today. This is just right. There's others who say we don't have nearly enough. I live in areas of the community where transit doesn't even reach. So those are the things of what is that right amount? How do we define that and measure that? And then, most importantly perhaps, how do we fund that? When we look back at our service levels historically, go back to 1986 with this particular graph, the green is showing you ridership per capita. And this is for per capita in our service area. What you'll see in 1986 is we were somewhere in the neighborhood of about one trip per eight tenths of a person. That gets a little confusing. The blue dotted line shows you how that has increased with the ridership. We peaked in about 1994. And then with rising costs. And frankly, as the county grew, and I mentioned the suburbanization of the county, we're seeing more and more people in the county, but they're living in areas that we can't serve. And so today, when you come all the way out to 2012, we're operating on a ridership per capita and a service level per capita at about the same level we were in 1986. So transit, at least in these measures, being per capita, has not kept up at all with what's happening in Washoe County. And I would say there's probably not too many governmental services that are operating today at 1986 levels in that measure. So it was pretty tough to whittle this down to just 10 minutes or so. I did the best just to stimulate some thinking on your part, but I guess I'd just leave you with this, that without additional funding and the cuts we're facing, we're going to be public transportation services at their lowest level since 1984 in this, in the county. And so that's a challenge for us. It's a challenge for what we're projecting the future to hold for us. And we're hopeful that the community can pull together and help solve some of these problems, and we're anxious to be a part of that solution. So if there's any questions, Lee or I would be happy to try and answer those for you. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, if I could just add one more thing. The RTC Commission at its retreat about three weeks ago directed that we assemble and conduct a transit summit to begin looking at some of these issues and also perhaps formulate a Blue Ribbon Committee that will work with the RTC throughout, say, a period of six months or a year, and then come back with some concrete recommendations on how to deal with these issues, how to answer some of these questions. So for fiscal year 14, if there were a theme to RTC's activities, it'll be to address the transit question. So with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
And I would add that at that retreat, there was lengthy discussion on this very topic, much more so than on the entire rest of the agenda for the day. And David, I don't remember if we talked about there, but how does our, you know, working at 86, 1986 kind of levels here in 2013, how does that compare to any other similar-sized city western? Let's qualify western because there's different behavior.
Sure.
How do we qualify?
You know, that's a good question, and it's a question that almost has to be looked at annually because funding challenges are being faced by all cities. And public transportation services are funded differently in every community. So some communities, depending on their funding sources, weathered the recession much better. Because we were, are tied to sales tax, which absolutely dropped by 30, 40% during this period of time, that affected us substantially. So to really get at the answer to your question, we'd have to go in and ask that question of other communities and see what's going on. What did happen in just before the recession, roughly 2007, we hit our all-time high ridership in the community. So we were growing, we were peaking. But again, as I mentioned, as we look at population growth in Washoe County, it's largely been in low-density suburban areas. Cold Springs, Spanish Springs, South Meadows. The core has grown, and by core, we talk about within the McCarran Loop. That has certainly grown, but not the same level as those outlying areas. And for fixed route transit and paratransit, you do much better if you've got lots of people in a small area who can avail themselves of those services. So in that measure, it doesn't surprise me that we haven't kept up with the per capita growth. And we might look at how are we doing within our core area? And I suspect we're carrying more passengers per capita than we were in 1986. But those are things that we haven't analyzed yet and I think need to be looked at.
And what kind of partnership do you need to, growing partnership? So if we're looking out to 35 and the demands of 35 being a 70%, I think it was, increase, what kind of partnership are you looking from the community?
Well, I can tell you just one off the top of my head, and I know Bill Thomas is pretty familiar with these issues. And that really comes down to just development and the types of developments that are approved and whether they are being approved for the automobile alone or whether they're being approved for transit and pedestrian users. And, you know, the transit-oriented development, I know, right now is in a sort of an awkward state here in our community. And personally, I attribute that to the fact that a lot of those ordinances that we put in place, you put in place, in Sparks and Washoe County, were put in place just before the recession took hold. And so I think, I think a lot of those issues are being looked at as anti-development to a certain extent, when in fact, it's the economy that was anti-development. And I believe that if the economy had continued to grow, those transit-oriented development programs and ordinances would help the transit projects, would help seniors. So anything that you approve, if you can make sure as a city that it is accessible, that you're looking at how does transit access this development, those are the kinds of things that we see in the future as being essential.
One more partnership I think I would throw into the mix that may not at first seem intuitive is economic development. I think one of the things I've walked away from a lot of the graphs and charts and discussions is this possible outcome where we may not have workers to fill the jobs as our senior population grows. I think looking at both our street and highway program and our transit program as a, excuse me, as a component of economic development so we can attract new businesses, diversify the economy, and create economic prosperity for all, will help to some degree, not completely, but to some degree, help us address senior transportation issues and transportation issues for the disabled.
Any other questions?
I have a question. The census, excuse me, the numbers that were up on the screen with regards to the large populations in Cold Springs and Spanish Springs, was, that was from the 2010 census?
Yes.
Has there been any non-official population numbers gathered since then, since that time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because I know Del Webb, it seemed to be very low, and I know Del Webb is sold out at this point. Is there other, are there senior communities in Cold Springs and Spanish Springs?
I'm not aware of any specific senior development out there. There's the senior development in Somerset, which is the Del Webb. And it was interesting, when that one was approved, much to Del Webb's surprise, we told them they were outside of our ADA service area.
That was going to be my next question, is how did, how did that conversation?
Yeah. You know, I, all I can tell you is that at the time, you know, Del Webb comes in and Somerset was growing, very popular development. I don't know the ins and outs of that land purchase, but as soon as they did buy and announced that they were there, we sat down with them. In fact, we sat down with the whole Somerset development to talk about the challenges of fixed route getting out there, let alone paratransit. Del Webb obviously did the numbers and concluded that their lifestyle of seniors maybe weren't going to critically need access. And I think they also assumed that at some future, we'd be out there. I think we probably all assumed we'd be out there at some future, but that's going to be a tough future right now.
Thank you.
We do have a request for public comment. Tom Hudson?
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Tom Hudson, and private citizen, but I do work with disabled vets and sit on board of the Disabled Veterans Group and also partake in the city's programs. And I may be dating myself here, but think back two recessions ago, back in 1980, pre-Tech crash, the county was miscollecting fee, property taxes. The negotiated settlement was five cents a gallon tax that we're paying for gasoline now. And I was wondering, when does that actually sunset? And since taxes seem to never go away, I mean, we just finished paying for Spanish-American war and laying cable across the Atlantic. By the way, comparison, is RTC in the food chain forgetting that five cents a gallon? As I know it'll stand. And that's about it.
Thank you very much. Lee, can you address that? Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Again, Lee Gibson, Executive Director of the RTC. The RTC has a, has a nine-cent-a-gallon gas tax that's now indexed to inflation. We're at approximately 23 cents a gallon. That is not a sunsetted source. Those levies will stay in place for all practical purposes until the legislature changes it. And I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. So they're in place forever for all practical purposes.
And that was by a vote of the people, correct?
That is correct. That is pursuant to the vote for RTC, the advisory ballot RTC 5 in 2008, and the 2009 legislature enacted the indexing through, I believe it was SB 201.
And so the specific question about the five-cent fuel tax that Mr. Hudson had, can you qualify that?
The five-cent fuel tax was the, I believe was the, this is going back in history. He referenced 1980, I believe it was, and that was the levy that RTCs were allowed back then. Then sometime in the 90s, that was changed and raised to nine cents. And then in the 21st century, the indexing began with the vote of the people in 2002 in Washoe County. Incidentally, Clark County did not do that. And then again, in 2008, an additional increment of indexing was applied pursuant to a vote of the people.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I may have misstated, this was property taxes.
Mr. Hudson, I know it's inconvenient for you, but could we get you at the mic, please, so that you're on record? Maybe we can bring it a little closer.
As I was saying, I may have misstated a little bit, but this was, this was property taxes that Washoe County was receiving that should have been going to Clark County. And that's the specific tax. And when does it sunset? And the other question remains the same naturally.
Okay. All right. Got it. Mr. Manager, could you kind of follow up on that and provide the information? Thank you.
Madam Chair, ma'am, just, you know, for the Senior Advisory Committee, if two of your goals are outreach and information in transportation, I would suggest that it is really critical, you know, aging in place is such the term. And for so many seniors, they're choosing to age in place that may not be the best locations for them. It is a, you know, it's not a great story and other, you know, and it's very personal, but when they become reliant upon, other than their own vehicle, you know, by driving themselves, they become very vulnerable. And I think that adds to isolation. And I think that is a real critical piece of information that needs to be messaged. And I guess another point, and I appreciate the comments about the history of the fuel tax from five cents to nine cents and now indexed at 23 cents, and the uniqueness of looking at what each community region has done. In 2008, it's been my opinion that this community very highly taxed itself almost to a measure, a level that you don't see, and I don't know any parallels at 23 cents. But at that same time, this region decided not to vote for transit services on a separate vote. And so the story was written at that point, our transit services continued to drop. And it is dire that we have not identified a new transit funding source. So whereas the 23 cents that's indexed and is going on and has so much capacity for so much road building and is being used to the degree that we're building local roads without federal money. We don't go through the National NIPA process. We're building roads using all local money that, you know, other communities just do not do. They always put federal money in the mix. So it brings to me, looking at that federal money that we have, why we have not flexed that over to the transit when we can do that at the board level at RTC. And I was back in Chicago last week, learning about the history of transit flexing federal funds for operation. And, you know, it's, it's available to us, particularly when you look at how much we've created so much transportation local revenue. And I wanted to ask you, the 214 budget is set, but 215, 216, 217, we can flex our federal dollars to transit up to a certain percent, like 10% or, does that have to be done by the state or can be done by the MPO?
Again, Lee Gibson, Executive Director of RTC. Yes, we can flex our federal funds, and in fact, we have flexed our federal funds. We use congestion mitigation air quality funds to operate the Rapid System on Virginia Street for three years as part of the allowed federal demonstration program that you could use those monies for. So we have indeed flexed those, and I believe successfully because of the Rapid Route on Virginia Street is one of our fastest-growing routes. The fundamental problem we have with flexing our funds, our federal funds, is just local match. Often, the FTA programs operated an 80/20 match, and when you have to come up with 20% of the capital cost, it can become a strain. So just simply applying and flexing more federal monies means we have to come up with more sales tax for that project. And then oftentimes, it could mean a capital project that would require an expanded operating cost, and oftentimes, we don't have the operating money to do that. All of our capital projects today are designed to save us operating money, such as the electric buses that would take us from, to put it in a miles-per-gallon equivalent. The four electric buses will get a 24-mile-per-gallon efficiency. So when you're paying $3.50 a gallon for gas or for biodiesel, as we do, the 24-mile-per-gallons makes a lot more sense as opposed to the three-miles-per-gallon we get with the current biodiesel hybrids we operate. I am pleased to report, we received delivery of one of our first new hybrid, hybrid diesels that will now get a six-mile-per-gallon rating, we think, knock on wood. But again, to go back, we have flexed our funds, we can flex our funds. It's a simple issue of coming up with the local match and coming up with a project that's going to save operating money.
Yeah, but Lee, okay, capital aside, because that is always 80/20, on the flexing, the CMAC is always going to go towards something, I mean, it's congestion mitigation air quality. So it is, you know, transit is eligible, but within the highway trust funds, you can flex within there. And we have not done that, have we?
Again...
Can we, I mean, can we or not?
We can flex Surface Transportation Program funds.
Okay.
But again, right now, we don't have the local match to take, say, $5 million from the STP account, move it over, and develop a transit project. And if we did, let's just say we bought more buses, we would not be able to afford the additional operating hours that those buses would operate.
But we could only flex for capital then, the STP, or can we flex it for operating?
Correct. We are only allowed to flex for capital, the STP funds. We can use some of our FTA capital for operating. We do that. We've been doing that for many years for preventative maintenance expense. So we're really pretty limited in what we're able to do.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to before, and that's presentation regarding the future needs of the senior and disabled communities.
Yes, and just to encapsulate this, we're, what we're going to do is to have, look at the city services first, and it'll be a dual presentation between Darryl Feenster and April Wolf. And then we'll go to the county level with Grady Tarbutton. And then we'll wrap it up with Sherry Manning at the state level. So they will be able to provide responses to that particular agenda item. So I'd like to inter- So I'd like to introduce Darryl Feimster. And again, for the record, Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director.
Thank you, Julie.
Good afternoon, evening. Uh, my name is Darryl Feimster. I manage Youth and Senior Services for the City of Reno. And I will say that it's probably one of the best jobs someone could have in the City of Reno. Um, I have an extraordinary senior citizens advisory committee who's presented you a presentation already tonight that very well covers the issues that we face and the work that we do. Our great city clerk, Ms. Lynette, is currently handing you a monthly newsletter that is produced by the Senior, um, Services Division and goes out monthly. You can get this through email. We do this publication and it's, uh, distributed all over. The other thing that you just received, Unleash the Power of Age, is the program that we do jointly with Washoe County, Sparks, Incline Village, and, um, this is also an annual event. It's a national event, Older Americans Month, that the City of Reno has participated in for seven years through our partnerships and collaborations with other agencies. One of the things that I will touch on that I don't know if there was a lot in the first presentation is the extraordinary amount of partnerships that the Senior Services Division engages in in order to provide the services we provide. You will see that a large percentage of everything we do is in partnership with other agencies, with volunteers, and, um, that's how we're able to stretch the resources that the council provides for us. Okay. There we go. Senior programming. I'm going, I was told not to press it real hard, it's very delicate. Ongoing senior recreation programs, activities, and events at city facilities. And again, we're just talking about senior programs. Senior games, we hold both a summer and winter senior games. This year was our first year to hold a winter senior games. The closing event for our winter senior games was a Valentine's Day dance that we serviced over 300 seniors to participate in this event. Older Americans Month, again, the brochure that I just provided you, we do with Washoe County and 30 other local agencies. Senior Fel- Senior Fest Health Fair is a collaboration with Senior Spectrum and other senior agencies. Again, all of these activities, all of these events, over the last few years, I will say that this council has been extraordinarily supportive of senior services. And the Senior Services Division is one area that the county had, the city, I apologize, has made certain to ma- keep whole and to continue to add services and activities for this part of our community. Third time was the charm last time. I'm sorry? Spacebar? There we go. Oops, now I went too far. I will now bring up April to talk about adaptive programming. Nope. Oh, yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Uh, so for the record, April Wolf, therapeutic recreation specialist, and also the staff liaison for the Reno Access Advisory Committee. Um, so I just wanted to, um, kind of elaborate and pair off of Angie McCabe's presentation and the work that the Reno Access Advisory Committee has done. Um, I began with the city in 2006, and the focus of the department's inclusion department and adaptive department really focused on inclusion and inclusion supports within our traditional recreation programs. So it focused on ensuring that if a child showed up for a before and after school program or a day camp program, that there were services in place that a person with a disability could be easily included in those programs. So we had, we have staff in place that can provide one-on-one support or behavioral support. Uh, we have a partnership with the University of Nevada Reno to have a behavior specialist in, um, student come in and work with us and intern with us and observe children that might have a behavioral disability and ensure that they have, um, the pieces in place to make sure that they're successful. So they might need some sort of a behavior plan or additional training with staff. Um, it may involve, um, providing a sign language interpreter in a recreation program so that an individual who is deaf and hard of hearing can participate in our programs. Um, where the, the Reno Access Advisory Committee was really, um, substantial is the summit that they hosted in 2007. Um, so as they mentioned earlier, and Angie mentioned, that summit focused on looking at recreation gaps. So we were already providing services to ensure our programs for individuals with disabilities and our regular programs that we had, our traditional programs were accessible, but we were missing that gap of providing services and programs and other activities that were specific to individuals with disabilities. Um, out of that summit, um, we were able to identify some of the barriers, and then we took that one step further and actually hosted two different, um, community-focused groups, um, one with adults and one with youth, looking at a specific program gap. So are there programs that we're not serving, um, for adults and children with disabilities? And where can we kind of grow and where should we take our program? Um, this led to the Paralympic Sport Reno. Um, City of Reno has a national affiliation with U.S. Paralympics. Uh, they created a kind of chapter program throughout the United States where we are an umbrella of U.S. Paralympics, where our grassroots program, we get to utilize a lot of their branding, support of access to athletes and grant funds, and it gives our program some national affiliation as far as our programs. Um, with that, we're able to bring in Paralympic athletes. We had a three-time gold medalist come last year and do a program in partnership with Washoe County School District. We're able to work with other nonprofits in town and host competitions that bring in other, um, individuals with disabilities into our community. Uh, we host an annual wheelchair rugby tournament that brings in teams from across the country, as well as a team that comes from Canada every year. Um, so there's a picture on the bottom from that tournament. We also are a big part of the Tour de Nae, um, bike race, where we have a hand cycle division and have one of the largest hand cycle divisions incorporated into an able-bodied race. So last year, we had 30 hand cyclists from across the country that participated in that competition with both past and current, um, Paralympic athletes. Um, we have an adaptive equipment rental program that is very unique to this community. Um, we're one of its kind in this community. I think our closest, um, similar program is in Eugene, Oregon, where we make all of our equipment available. We've been able to grow our equipment and fleet of equipment as we've grown our programs. So we make that equipment available to rent. This came out of the youth focus group where a parent said, "I want to be able to ride my bike with my child," you know, "on a Sunday and not have to come to a program that's at a specific time, that has a specific cost, that can only happen one time a year." So we make our equipment available to rent. So a parent could come, pick up a p- a bike for the weekend, go to the Sparks Marina, use the city pass along the river, and recreate with their family on their own time. This is something that's unique to our community. It's, um, inviting for individual with a disability that may want to visit the area for a conference or to visit family and who want to access our amenities in this area, um, where we have everything from adaptive bikes to beach wheelchairs, where families can access beaches, bike paths, and other amenities in this community. Um, and then lastly, we've really grown our programming for individuals with disabilities that are veterans in our community. Um, as you know, individuals are coming back with injuries. They may do a lot of their medical and rehab at a, and in another community that has a larger polytrauma VA hospital, but they're returning to our community. And we see that as a growing need in order to provide programs for veterans with disabilities. Um, we've received a number of grants from U.S. Paralympics and other organizations and started offering an annual military sports camp, um, which is featured in one of the pictures, where we took a group of 15 disabled veterans and their spouse for an all-free, absolutely free, um, week of adaptive sport, to introduce them to adaptive sport and getting them reintegrated into their community and accessing community resources. We've also started a program just more recently where we offer a fitness program for disabled veterans at the Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center. This is something that we're working in partnership with our local VA. Um, we have the facilities, we're in close vicinity to the VA, and we're utilizing their physical therapy staff to help come in and be able to teach safe fitness opportunities and then have them be able to continue to use our facility and work on reintegrating into the community and improving their health.
Again, um, as we've mentioned, I, I think, um, our committee chairperson thoroughly discussed this issue, and, um, I think, um, well, from there, I believe we'll be bringing forward Mr. Tarbutton.
Before we start with Grady, are there any questions? For the staff presentation? Okay. Grady.
I apologize. Um, there is another piece from, uh, April prior to Grady.
So both, um, so both of us wanted to introduce, from the city's standpoint, where we see growth and future needs of both the individuals with disabilities as well as the senior community. Um, so Darryl will probably flip back and talk about the senior, um, needs, and then also have, um, our guest speakers also talk about from the state level as well as from the county level, how those, um, future growths and how we can all work together. Um, for individuals with disabilities, what we see as growing needs is maybe looking at, as the two communities converge, so we have our senior population and as they age might have disabilities, so that there may be an increased need to start to look at the need to develop senior adaptive programs. So we currently have, you know, programs that I offer, some hand cycling and wheelchair rugby and wheelchair basketball, that a senior may not be interested in playing full contact wheelchair sports. So looking at other adaptive programs such as wheelchair tennis, um, botchi, growing our adaptive golf program that we do currently have. So the need to, as the two populations are aging and may have disabilities, what other programming and opportunities are available. Um, the next is looking at increased programming for disabled veterans and disabled members of the armed services. So we want to continue to work on our partnership with our local VA and be a community partner to them to offer programming. Um, so with the local VA that currently have one recreation therapist, um, I work as a recreation therapist in the community. It's a great opportunity to have them come out of the VA hospital system and use all of our community amenities and resources as well as programs. Um, improving, improving physical access to all our indoor and outdoor facilities. So I know, uh, currently, accessibility is one of the council priorities. I see this as an ongoing and future need. Um, I know coming forward will be the ADA Transition Plan, where our department has gone through and reviewed all of our facilities and parks and looked at where are our needs to make sure that our facilities, as we move forward and do retrofits, um, have accessibility needs to ensure that they're accessible to individuals with disabilities. And the last is to secure sustainable levels of funding for inclusion and recreation supports and services. So as we've seen a decline in the economy, we've been able to be very resourceful as far as accessing grant funds. I think in this fiscal year alone, we've, um, been able to bring in over $70,000 in grant funds in order to do programs, but looking at, we don't want to offer one-time programs that once that grant is ended, we don't want to be able to shut down the program. So looking at potential community partners. So for example, we receive funding from the National Recreation and Park Association to start an adaptive golf program for disabled veterans. We were able to purchase more additional equipment and provide free lessons to disabled veterans. We're now looking at community partners, such as our PGA chapter that's local, to see if they have funding that they can continue to support that scholarship piece of that program. So always looking at how can we sustain programs that are funded through grants and so that we don't see those programs end.
April, you mentioned the VA a couple of times and the partnership that you have there. Have you also reached out or, or would there be an opportunity, like maybe with the Military Alliance?
Yeah. So, um, that is actually one of our greatest community partners. So, um, two years ago, I was actually at a, a council meeting talking about an award we received from the Department of Arnie, Army, and, uh, it was a suggestion to approach that association. We have worked with them. They have funded and been our presenting sponsor for the military sports camp for the last two years, um, and will continue to support that vent, hopefully, uh, going forward. So they've definitely been a, an asset to our program.
Terrific. And how about with the university?
Um, so currently, uh, as far as partnership role with the university, we work with their, um, behavior analysis program, and where, that's where we're accessing a graduate student to help come into our program and work with children with behaviors. So that's unique to our program. We don't always, um, see Parks and Rec facilities or in programs that use a behavior analysis student to come in and be able to assist. So we're really trying to be proactive so that kids with disabilities are successful from the get-go versus, um, looking at any suspensions or things that might make them have a hard time in our programs.
And how about like a First T?
Uh, we have not worked with First T. So, um, our golf program was originally funded through a grant that, um, it was Disabled Sports USA Far West received. Um, so it was a three-year grant that got us started, and then we actually used National Recreation and Park Association to continue to fund it. And then we're hopefully looking at local chapters, um, that can fund it other than grant funds.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? All right, Grady.
For the record, Grady Tarbutton, Director of Washoe County Senior Services, Madam Vice Mayor, uh, members of the council. Nice to see you all tonight. We have a huge challenge in front of us, the aging of the senior population. The data I'm gonna share with you tonight comes, uh, mostly from Elder's Count 2013, which is a publication of the University of Nevada Reno. Uh, if you have any need to get to sleep, uh, this is a 220-page document. I'm gonna try to do it a little bit more quickly for you. Aging in place is the issue that we have to address. And I'm gonna talk to you about three things tonight. One is the challenge we at Washoe County Senior Services have from a social services perspective in keeping people independent in their homes and the benefit of doing that. Secondly, I'm going to highlight some of the data from Elder's Count, uh, and go over that and tell you what Washoe County senior community actually looks like today and what we think it's gonna look like tomorrow. And then finally, I'm gonna talk to you about the Senior Services Master Plan, which is, uh, going to help us get there. And we're gonna ask city council, uh, to participate in the leadership forum for that, for that group, uh, so that, uh, we have representatives from both the cities and Washoe County. Make it sure it's information that you can, you can use. Now, today, Washoe County Senior Services serves 8% of the entire community. Entire senior community, families and caregivers. We believe that if we were able to reach about 50% of all the family caregivers and the seniors with just information about the resources they have, I mean, just to imagine a family caregiver who learned about the benefits of, of long-term care insurance and were purchasing that in their 40s instead of waiting until they're 65 to do it, or maybe not do it at all. We also need to be serving 20% of all seniors because there's that many, as you'll see from the data, who are at risk. And if we were able to serve, uh, increase the number of people that are, are most vulnerable, we have 175 people that have a social worker, get a home-livered meal, have a nurse go out, get other, uh, social services from us, in-home care from us, and have been on those programs for over a year. If we were able to increase that, we'd be looking at potentially saving, uh, Washoe County and the state of Nevada, another as a taxpayer, about $50 million a year. By delaying people from entering what we call the long-term care system, well, with preventive services, early intervention, then we're able to prevent people from going to those higher levels of care, at least delay them. If you can keep people, if you have the resources in the community to keep people independent, then, then you keep them at home. Uh, these graphs probably explain it the most, in the most simple way. Uh, the less costly programs are those that are early intervention, information. Might add Parks and Recreation, people that stay physically active, engaged in their community, also are less likely to age as quickly as others. Those that, there are people that need institutional care. We all know that. Uh, and with those folks, need to provide that care. But if we keep that, uh, to those that have that need, those needs that can only be met in a nursing home, then that's the best way, best option that we have. And as you heard earlier, we have a population growth of today, or 2010, six, 76,000 people over the age of 60, 130,000 by the year 2030. So what we need to do is to provide adequate services to keep people independent and to identify the people who are most vulnerable. We need to identify the gaps in, uh, services and develop innovative, innovative solutions. And Madam Vice Mayor, you had a question earlier about, uh, to RTC, about what's different about Washoe County compared to other communities like, like ours. And those communities are the most successful are those that are ageable to leverage federal resources. And those are not necessarily, in case of senior services, those are not necessarily matching funds. Those are actually programs that pay for the... Those are actually programs that pay for themselves from federal resources. One, for example, is what's called Care Transitions. It's a program that keeps people from going, being readmitted into the hospital after they've left the hospital. Washoe County, in partnership with our communities, other agencies, has made application for that. We do not qualify because we do not have the local infrastructure to meet those, the requirements of those programs. And we can spend more time on that later if you have questions, but there are resources that we do not receive here in Washoe County and it's mainly an element of local control. There's good news and bad news about seniors in Washoe County. Lower rates of obesity, people are more physically active. Actually, our hospital readmission rates are lower than many communities in the rest of the country. There's fewer nursing home admissions here today. But we see other facts out there that indicate there's a very vulnerable population in the community. We have lower life expectancy, higher mortality rates, a high percentage of people, about 20% that are near poverty, nutritional risk, a community that is medically underserved, and we're looking at some really increased growth in demand on caregivers. There's been a 40% increase in people providing care for relatives and families since 2000. The conclusions that we've reached from the data is that our community is aging and it is a permanent change. Although northern Nevada seniors are healthier and perhaps wealthier than the average, the population of the most vulnerable is going to grow very rapidly. And we need to look at new policies that support aging in place, whether that be a matter of quality of life, support for family caregivers, and then some of the basics of transportation, land use zoning, and home and community-based services. Some other vulnerability data, and these are the measures that we at Washoe County look in the people that we serve. These are the people really we focus on. People that live alone. 27% of Washoe County seniors over the age of 65 live alone. 20% are at or near poverty. 7.8% are aged 85 today and that number will grow by 38% by 2020. 18% of Washoe County seniors say they have a piece of durable medical equipment so that they can remain independent. 40% say they have difficulty with one of their activities of their living, whether it be bathing or even leaving the house, caused by a functional limitation. So we have people at risk. And then we will see, we have seen growth in Alzheimer's disease in Nevada that makes us the fifth, the most, fifth most challenged state in the United States when it comes to Alzheimer's disease and dementia. 38% increase since 2000 and additional 45% by 2025. Poverty level, the lowest 20% of senior households average an income of $9,900 per year. The second highest, 20%, 40% in other words, is $19,620. The bottom 60% in terms of seniors in Washoe County have a primary income source of Social Security. The column you see at the right, the highest fifth, those are people that have yet to retire or have significant savings or investments. 16.5% of Nevada seniors face a threat of hunger. It's the 10th highest of all states. As I said earlier, life expectancy is the 37th lowest at 77.6 years. And 20 to 40% of Washoe County seniors did not see a doctor in the last year. And caregivers, there's more than a half million in Nevada and 47% of them over the age of 65. Nursing homes, Nevada is one of the few states that has seen more nursing homes open in the past decade. Of those nursing homes, 27.1% had severe deficiencies. In other words, in investigations done by the state, 27.1% of those incidents caused harm or placed somebody at risk of getting harmed. And then of course, nursing home care costs are going up at least 5% a year. And right now, it's 86,000 on average in the state for a semi-private, for a private room and $75,000 for a semi-private. The state itself pays $59,000 per year. Of course, that's taxpayer-supported. This chart goes back to the, those numbers I said, the people we serve at Senior Services are those that live alone, 85-plus, below poverty, so on and so forth. So our numbers from 2010 and 11 say that we served 2,520 people who lived alone, which is a fair percentage of the caseload that we have. But the actual estimate of people that were living alone at that time, 14,200, and it's projected to grow to 18,000 by 2016. Poverty is, shows similar issues and first of all, the initial gap between who we serve and then the growth between now and 2016 and then even more further out, as you know. The economic impact of the aging of our community is going to be seen in several ways. There's going to be increasing healthcare expenditures, long-term care expenditures, which can be done either in the home or can be done in a nursing home. There's going to be a large increase in jobs that provide these types of services. As you know, over the past five years during the economic downturn, the only types of jobs that increased in Washoe County were the health and health-related fields. There's going to be increased demand for senior housing, which is an opportunity for developers, and there's going to be community care options that will be needed, which means in-home services providers will have an opportunity to grow or, and expand. However, we're still going to see that increasing number of poor and low-income seniors. Those percentages have not changed over the past several decades and they're unlikely to change in the future. We're going to face a risk of premature institutionalization because we don't have adequate resources in the community to keep people independent. So the pressure is, there's going to be an upward pressure and you see that in the growth of the number of nursing homes in Nevada. And then there's the unnecessary hospital readmissions. The average cost for a hospital stay for somebody between 65 and 84 was almost $64,000. That's for a single hospital stay. The average person in Nevada, a retiree, is going to, after they turn 65, after they're on Medicare, they're going to pay more than $250,000 in their lifetime for healthcare and they're going to pay more than $300,000 in long-term care. There are lower cost options, care coordination and case management. Senior Services does that today and we help families take care of their own by coordinating the services. I'm sure that you have heard stories from your constituents, perhaps know personally, of the challenge you face when a family member goes into a hospital and suddenly, unexpectedly, goes into a hospital and then how do you plan for that? It's very difficult. Senior Services are experts at that. That's our role in the community is to help families find out how to deal with those situations and work with the hospitals to make sure people get the care they need when they get home. However, we have four case managers at Senior Services. Then of course, the services that are provided in the home, home and community-based services are the ones that keep people independent. And there's other levels of care, adult day healthcare, assisted living, and group homes that are also able to provide that heavier care for folks when they need it. Maturing in America is a report that was done by the MetLife Foundation and they focused on these areas that communities should look at as a plan for their aging community. Healthcare, nutrition, exercise, transportation, public safety. I won't read it all to you, but these are clearly, there's guidance out there to help us move forward and help us make the decisions that we need to make. So to that end, Washoe County Senior Services is starting work on a master plan. Our goal is to engage our community leaders. We're going to look at, look back at what both the city did in 2002 and Washoe County did in 2006 into studies that were done then and we're going to build a comparative database that will help us do analysis on the community and meet the gaps, identify the gaps, and help us with planning. We're going to engage the stakeholders in this process. Public-private partnerships are essential. Senior Coalition is a 75-member group, everything from the university to hospitals to in-home services provider to nonprofit agencies. We're there, the Senior Coalition is there, to work with the county and its partners to make sure we make the right decisions as well. There's different roles for the organizations that are going to be part of the strategic planning process. There's a state and county role. The county already pays for some long-term care services. And as I said, Senior Services provides some of the home and community-based services. That role is not going to change. Those relationships are not going to change. They can be enhanced and I know that the state is very interested. Jane Gruner, who's the new Director of Nevada Aging and Disability Services Division, is committed to working with Washoe County to find new pathways to make these services available. And there's the city and county relationships. I think about the partnership, Julie Conway and Darryl Feimster have both spoken about it, but the things that we do together. There's facilities that we share. There's the Target Meal Program at Neal Road and there's classes and activities that City of Reno brings up to Ninth and Sutro. Those partnerships have, make a lot of difference in the community. They build confidence in the citizens that we're working together and we're both committed to making that happen. Those opportunities keep people active and engaged, as I said earlier. And finally, the public-private partnerships, there's a lot of opportunities there, not through, just through the Senior Coalition, but from nonprofit agencies that can do things that neither the city nor the county can do. So as we move forward then, we're going to look at some things in the, in the master plan. Supporting a healthy and active senior community. And when we're talking about the master plan, it's not just about senior services. Obviously, a big piece of that is senior services, but it's also about what else does a community going, going to involve, going to need. Kim Robinson from Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning is going to be one of our partners and be on our leadership forum and help us make those decisions. I'll take any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Grady? Grady, I have one. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Are there, can you talk, give me some examples maybe of some of the private partnerships that exist? I mean, when I think of the desperate need for youth services in our community, I can name a handful of private organizations that are out there, you know, starting with the Boys and Girls Club just down the list, that are there to also work on those kinds of issues that the youth have. Can you give me some examples at the senior level?
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you two. One is in-home care. The same people that provide in-home care privately, selling it to the customer that's leaving the hospital, are also the same provider that has a contract with the county and with the state in delivering services. And so the resources that we have go into building that, that public-private relationship and it keeps costs down by, we have, use a competitive process to pick the agencies. But with the agencies, I can, there's a number of agencies on the Senior Coalition that are committed to these home and community-based services and working with the county to make them more available. So that's, that's one. The second is, we talked about Care Transitions a little bit earlier and what Care Transitions is. The federal regulations on that don't allow government to be the provider. So it's essential that a local agency like Washoe County identify a nonprofit in the community to develop the capacity to deliver those services. It can be done by physicians' offices and physicians' groups, but it can also be done by nonprofit groups such as the Center for Healthy Aging, who we have a partnership with.
Thank you.
First of all, we're so lucky to have you. We really are. I know that this is something that you have dedicated for so long and you know so much about. Do you kind of have an idea of where we are in our community as far as how we rate with other communities and senior services?
Well, those communities, and I'll go back to Care Transitions, there's a competitive process for $500 million nationwide and 102 communities were selected. None were selected from Nevada. And the, the big difference is, again, that local control where you have an agency like Washoe County that can leverage those federal resources. Right now, we're primarily a service provider. We provide meals to people and those are very important services. But that ability to make those policy decisions at the local level means that when you build on those partnerships, you develop, like with Care Transitions, then over the years, you're going to have what a federal agency would call capacity. There were 102 communities that were selected nationwide and every one of them, you know, I've been in this business for a while, you can go, it's Akron, Ohio. And there's been a partnership there with a local agency and a medical community called SUMA for 10 or 15 years. There's the John Muir Foundation in California. There's Pierce County in Washington State. There's, there's communities all over the country and they have very similar things in common and that is the development of the capacity at the local level. The strength to really, ability to bring in those federal resources and have influence at the state and the federal level.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
I agree. I think that is a good point. Last year, I worked with Sheri in the, on the Section 811, a competitive grant program for supportive housing for folks with disabilities. And the state of Nevada was not able to do very well on that grant application and receive an award because they hadn't done, you know, the groundwork in, in serving that population and having the partnerships in place. So we are a very low-service state and we also are a low-tax state. I mean, that is really what we trump ourselves as and, and I think the two are related.
They are. And as I said earlier, it's not necessarily using local resources as match, which can be done and we can do a better job of that, but Care Transitions is Medicare. It's, Medicare establishes a rate for what Care Transitions costs in the community, just like they establish a rate of what it costs to go see a doctor. And the agencies that provide that service are reimbursed from Medicare, not by the city, not by the county, not by the state. And we need that capacity to do that in this community. And there's several other examples.
Thank you, Grady. Sheri.
Madam Vice Mayor, council members, members of the committee and public, for the record, I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada Governors Council on Developmental Disabilities, Sheri Manning. And although I think it's extremely appropriate that I be the final speaker to wrap everything up, because everything I've heard here is a lot of initiatives that we're working on at the council, I'm also a little fearful that I am the person keeping you from dinner. So, okay, I'll try and keep this a little brief and give you as much information as I can. First of all, who is the Nevada Governors Council on Developmental Disabilities? For those of you that are here in the audience and committee members, there's actually some brochures out at the security desk you can pick up. And also, I've given the council members a packet of information that I'll go through some of that information for you. But the Nevada Governors Council on Developmental Disabilities exists in the state of Nevada and actually, there's one in every state and territory and we were created under the Developmental Disabilities Act of 2000. We are 75% federally funded. So in 2012, we received around $490,000 from the Administration on Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. And it is a requirement in the DD Act that we receive a 25% state match. So in 2012, it was right around $165,000. So our whole council... So, our whole council operates on just a little over $600,000 annually. We also have two partners in the DD Act. Some of you may be familiar with the Nevada, the University Center for Excellence in Disabilities, which is up at UNR. And they are a partner in the DD Act, and also the Nevada Disabilities Advocacy Law Center. So, some of you, especially if there's been any access issues, are probably familiar with them because they're the protection and advocacy group here. So, the three of us come together, and we work in partnership in the state to work towards systemic change, capacity building, and advocacy for people with developmental disabilities. So, first of all, one of the things that we've found is that because we are a developmental disability council, that you find out that when I tell you that a developmental disability manifests prior to age 22, and that it must have a significant impact on three areas of your life, oftentimes, people stop and they think, well, you know what, prior to 22, so how does all of this mesh? Well, number one, our disability community is aging, okay? And they're living longer. So, the thing is, is a lot of our people with developmental disabilities are aging. And not only that, as we heard, and especially with the RTC presentation, we're going to need more and more services as we get older. And so, although it might not be a developmental disability because it didn't happen prior to age 22, I think we're all going to find that we're going to be challenged here in the near, or hopefully distant, future with disabilities. And so, those, all of the services that were mentioned here tonight are going to be definitely needed in order to stay in the community and live an independent and inclusive life. The Nevada Governors Council on Developmental Disabilities, so I'm going to call it the DD Council, that makes it a whole lot easier and a lot less of a mouthful. The DD Council, we work under a five-year state plan that we must turn over to the feds. And our current five-year state plan that we're working on is, it started October 1st of 2011, and it will go through September 30th of 2016. What we did in order to find out what the needs of the developmental disability community were for this five-year state plan was, we went out to the community, brought people with developmental disabilities, and I'll talk about some of those organizations, and we, disability organizations, government organizations together to find out what those needs were. So, currently, under our five-year state plan, those areas of emphasis that we're working under is employment, health, transportation, and self-advocacy. Now, when I was first asked to come here tonight, I was thinking, okay, you know, access, everybody, we heard about the sidewalks, we've talked about, you know, accessible recreation and all of that. And I think what's real important here, and like I say for a wrap-up that we need to think about, is everything in life requires access, okay? And so, one of the things that I'm going to speak to is, you had asked, Councilwoman Brekis, you had asked earlier about the school districts, what was happening at that level. One of the things that the Governors Council supports is an organization called People First. People First is a self-advocacy group, and it's run by people with developmental disabilities. And actually, if you refer to the packet that I gave you, and also, for those of you behind me, there also were some of these left out at the security desk also. This is our report to the constituents of Nevada. And on here, we have our People First organization, which has eight chapters. We have 259 members. They're located across the entire state of Nevada. And we also have a partners-in policymaking group, which is trained to go out for self-advocacy. And those are mainly made up of parents with, parents of people with developmental disabilities. So, to answer your question about what's happening in the school district, People First actually has been working towards trying to get a student-first organization in the high schools. It's a little difficult with right now, there's so many things going on with the different organizations and everything, but they are working towards that. And we are going to be going out for another grant funding here. It'll go out in June, and actually, it will start October 1st. And when we do that, that is going to be one of the components that we're going to ask for, is to focus on the youth, so that they have a voice. The other thing that we had helped to fund was, and this again is in your nice little folder that I gave you, there are two DVDs in here. And the one that I, well, both I'd like you to pay attention to, and please take the time to view these. So, since I'm still speaking about students, the Community-Based Career Exploration Summer Camp, incredible. What happened is, we had Medicaid infrastructure grant monies that came in, so from the federal, the Center for Medicaid Services. And what happened is, we went out for grants, and Washoe County School District, this was about three years ago, had come forward and said that they wanted to do a camp. So, what currently happens with our, and we've heard about inclusion and segregation tonight, whether it be seniors being alone, or whether it be people with disabilities. And what happens with our school-aged children that are transitioning is, those, especially with the most significant disabilities, do not get offered the opportunity for inclusive community job choice. Usually, what happens is, they end up moving into what we call a sheltered workshop, or a center for, of training, a training center. And so, what's happening now is, we're seeing a great big movement for a couple of reasons. Number one, at the national level, they have a law out there right now that they're working on, and again, that's at the national, federal level, they're talking about the sub-minimum wage. A lot of things are going to happen. We have been, the councils have been very involved, and they were a very significant part of deinstitutionalization. And you heard about the seniors sitting at home on their own, you know, being segregated, and I'll speak a little bit to that about another program that I was involved in. However, what happens is, the same thing's happening with our students, is they're going from high school, and they're going into these segregated, making a few pennies on the dollar. So, with this national level, there is some concern, and one of our largest, and here in the Reno area, you have High Sierra Industries, okay? Really good organization. I know Levon Brooks, work closely with her. And, you know, she is one that's very, very forward-thinking and moving towards becoming more of a training center, versus a, you come in here and you put little pieces together, okay, and you get a few cents on the dollar. But what's happening is, at the national level, with this new law, the sub-minimum wage, they're not going to be able to continue paying those sub-minimum wages. So, we're going to have people, more and more people sitting in day centers or sitting at home segregated. So, what the council does is, we work to bring organizations together, to bring down, bring together and break down silos to be able to be a resource. I think I'm going to, I'm going to kind of refer to us as a resource, because we've done really, really good at that. So, one of those, getting back to this DVD, and I'm going to tell you, you're probably going to need an IT person to get you into it. We have these remade here, and you have to go up to a little area and click on a different area to get into it. So, please play with it, and don't think there's something wrong, and just throw it away. But what happened is, the Washoe County School District came together, and they brought people from their special, children, juniors and seniors from their special education class, and they are in this video. And they had a week-long, to where they went to, actually, RTC was very, very instrumental in this, because they provided buses. And you know how they talked about, RTC talked about the training and being able to have access to the buses? That's one of the things they did. They did a full-day training with these students on how to catch, how to ride the bus, how to prepare, how to be on time, and all of that. Plus, on top of it, we had quite a few businesses here. Reno Toyota's one, we had Hawes Garden Center, that actually took these students in and trained them how to work in the community. And this is actually being funded by the Washoe County School District now. It originally started with a federal grant. So, I really encourage you to look at that, because you're looking at your community of our future. That's our future and what's going to happen. And if we don't start thinking progressively at that level, then we're going to end up with what we call, you know, closing down the sheltered workshops or whatever, and people are sitting at home. The reason why I was really able to identify with that is, when I first came into this job, there is a program out there that, again, CMS funds, it's called Money Follows the Person. And I was the project manager for that when it first came on board, and Jenny had mentioned a minute ago about, you know, these accessible housing. So, the council was really instrumental in providing funds to build these accessible housing, Todd, or the Butterworth Estates that you have down here. So, I was the person that went out, because the grant funding came through our Office of Disability Services, and I went in and I saw these people that we were moving out of nursing homes, and it was their choice. And I went and visited them in their homes to see how their quality of life was. And a lot of them were just sitting there alone in these homes, no recreation, no place to go, no transportation to get them there. That is why, with what RTC was telling you, what we see happening in the future, with the needs, you heard the senior services talking, we need to be very, we need to be very cognizant of working as a community. So, I guess if you'd say, what do we need to do? We need to work as a community. I think Washoe County School District stepping forward, and what they did in this training is incredible. You know, the training, providing that, those are probably, that was 50 students, those are probably 50 students that you may not have to pick up at a house, because now, they have the training to be able to get there. So, access is a major component in integrated and community living. And again, it is going to be a large-cost drain on society, if we go back to institutionalization, whether it be in a workshop employment setting, or whether it be nursing homes or anything like that. And I like to use the story too of my sister-in-law. My sister-in-law was 60 years old, and she had a stroke. She ended up in a nursing home in Carson City. While she was there, three of her bedmates had passed away, because it was, you know, an elder home. And she called me in, knowing that I work for the council, and that the whole idea was to live in the community and be integrated, and choice. And she says, I don't want to live here anymore. She was completely paralyzed, she was also obese, and she was paralyzed completely on her right side. So, she needed a Hoyer lift to get her out of bed. She said, I don't care. I don't care if I die in my bed, I don't want to see another person next to me pass away. I want to be out in the community and live on my own. I want my guinea pig, okay? So, we moved her into, we actually got, we had a person that had an accessible van, because the nursing homes do not give you access to move out. They're really good when you're in there, but they wouldn't move her out. So, we moved her into the Butterworth Estates. And back when the accessible housing was created, that used to be supported housing. But what happened is, the residents in those apartments would pull their hours. And so, this is one of the things just to think about, and if you could find a way to maybe work together on this, they used to pull their hours, so that what would happen is, you had someone there that could help these people 24 hours a day. They would bring in another caregiver. Well, when the Center for Medicaid Services looked at it, they said, no, 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 you know, we can't be pulling hours. So, they pulled the supported housing out of there. So, my sister-in-law went to the Butterworth Estates. It was completely accessible, so during her six months that she lived while she was there, she got out in her, in her little van, her little cart, and she was able to take the RTC bus and get out, and she lived an independent life. And knowing that she could only get out of bed if someone came and helped her. And the past services, they came over three times a day, and they helped her get out, but that was what she wanted. So, I think we need to look at quality of life, and we need to look at how are we, as a city, as a county, as a state, how are we going to educate our youth, our people that need, right now, people to pick them up at the home, and that may not be available later? So, several things that we're doing right now is, the council actually, another thing, you've got to watch this DVD, okay? This is called, Let's Build a World for Us All. It's a music video, you're going to love it, and you are going to recognize, because it is your constituents, okay, here in the area that are in this. One of the girls is a 16-year-old. She goes to McQueen High School, and she has already started, she's got Down Syndrome, and she started her own business. It's called Kelderman Glass, Classy Glass. And so, she's selling jewelry. So, these are people that are learning how to live, work, make their own way in the community, and that's what we need to do. There are, with what's going on, if you look especially at the national level, and you see the butting heads and the sequestration, our budget just dropped by $20,000. If we don't work together, the government agencies, organizations, and people with the disabilities, the aging community, then you know what? It's just not going to happen. We're going to find ourselves going back to the dark ages of institutionalization. So, we need to break down the silos, we need to work together, and we can only do that through partnership and collaboration. And the council, what we're here for, we do not provide direct service, we can't, okay? So, what we do is, we take, about 30% of our dollars goes out into community grants, and I'm going to use a really great project, okay? It's called, it was called Access for All, and that was the City of Reno Recreation. What they did is, they came forward and they put in for one of our grants, for $7,500 for three months. They were able to also give us in-kind of $42,000, which helped us to bring in more federal funds. And what it did is, that program, since, actually, since Amber didn't speak about it, let me real quick tell you here, with my cheaters. The Access for All Project implemented, so this is when they wrote it up, said, "will implement," implemented programming in an effort to address ongoing behavior issues and train staff who work with persons with disabilities on the impact of misinterpreting behavioral signs and symptoms as a manifestation of the disability alone. Through leisure education, the project will provide individuals with disabilities the knowledge and support to access recreation, healthy living services to support an active healthy lifestyle. There's just a lot, I think, that we can all work together, and it's not until we come into, and I appreciate you bringing me here tonight, and bringing RTC, the city, the two committees, because I think that we need to know what all of us are doing, so we're not working in silos, so we can do it together and make a much stronger community.
Indeed.
So, that's all I had to offer tonight. Do you have any questions about the DD Council, what we do? We are not in the governor's office, by the way, okay? Our council is governor-appointed, but we, and we are a state agency, the employees are, but we are not in the governor's office.
Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Clearly, the message was continuing throughout the evening, continuing to work on our cooperative relationships and partnering for a stronger product. Is there any kind of a wrap-up, Julie, that you would like to? Okay. Comments? Public comment? Please come forward. Mr. Cazara.
My name's James Cazara, I'm a Reno resident. I would like to have the city council and city think of the senior advisory board kind of like a at-large NAB, because we aren't getting any input from the neighborhood NABs. If they have projects that benefit all, that benefits the seniors also. So, if they have any projects that are going on or being in the plan age, we'd like to be a part of that. And also, if there is projects coming to your NAB that benefit all, we should also hear those. And at now, I don't, I've been on the board now for two years, and I'm re-upping for another two years, we haven't had any of those. And I think it's time that we should get more out and be more visible at the NABs, and have the NABs be aware of that we are willing to help the NABs if there is a projects available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We really appreciate you all being here, and in particular, thank you for the hearing impaired translation, the signaling. I think that that is a tremendous service that we certainly appreciate your time. Each of you who participated tonight, thank you for giving us the input. It is a mission, a partnership that we need to grow, and that is a commitment that this council had in its planning session, is the public outreach and better partnering within our community. Thank you, everyone. We, motion for adjournment?
No.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again, everyone.